Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. Due to the length of the agenda, we are unable to read all legislation to be introduced. Please refer to the City Clerk's website at the PittsburghPA.gov web address to view the introduction of papers for Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a great day.
Ready? Good morning and welcome to the meeting, regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, Jan- July 14th. One meeting announcement before council begins. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the book?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Groves. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
You're...
Sorry.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President.
Here.
As we join together from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment for a moment of silence. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Our next order of business is proclamations and we have, I believe, two to be presented, Madam Clerk.
Three.
Try to turn my phone side, Lisa.
Are we online?
Yes, ma'am.
You are.
Kim, you're on mute.
Council President Cal Smith presents Bill Number 562. "Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate Mr. Bob Bowder on his retirement and thank him for his years of service to the City of Pittsburgh and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare July 17th, 2020 to be Mr. Bob Bowder Day in the City of Pittsburgh." Bill Number 563. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby acknowledge and thank PGH Apparel for continuing to keep the pride, glory, and honor of Pittsburgh history of the H alive and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, July 19th, 2020 to be H Day in the City of Pittsburgh." And Bill Number 566. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares Monday, July 20th, 2020 to be Ambassador Samantha Power Day here in our most livable city of Pittsburgh."
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Any discussion? I just want to congratulate, I just want to congratulate Bob Bowder, the Tribune Review reporter who's, I said he was the quintessential reporter and he's going to be missed here. So he got details down to a science. He was very good at his reporting, mostly because I think he still took shorthand and he was able to really go back and look at his notes and that's something that you don't see a lot of nowadays. But I just want to congratulate him and thank him for his accurate reporting for the most part over the years and hope that he enjoys his return. Do we vote all in favor of the proclamations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamations are approved. The next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please. Madam Clerk, do you have the list?
Absolutely. I have William Parker.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Please state your, just your name and your neighborhood.
My name is William Parker and my neighborhood is the North Side of Pittsburgh.
Go ahead, Mr. Parker, you have three minutes.
So basically, my questions and concerns are based around tech inclusion and this racial equity commission that is supposed to be put together by the city. And I want to know basically, are we focusing on tech right now? Or we focus on, on tech investments? I also want to know if we're encouraging universities such as CNU to enroll more blacks. They said that systemic racism is something that's taught. Well, I believe that it's being taught in these universities by division, by separation. Another one of my concerns is will we create our own CDFI in this region for African Americans? Currently, there are three CDFIs in this region and none of them are led by African Americans. My next concern is, has that 11-person committee been selected yet? And how can I apply to be considered to be on that committee? And also, ending with supervision. When this committee is put together, who will supervise it? Because so often, so many times, we trust these individuals to lead us the right way. But instead of that, I want to suggest that we trust the data, trust the matrix, and have an independent contractor make sure that this money is being allocated in the right way. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Have a nice day. Next speaker, please.
I have Bob Bowder.
Where you at, Bob?
Mr. Bowder. Is he there? It's hard to see on this thing.
I know he was having some trouble logging in, so we may, if you want to come back.
Let's go to the next speaker, please, and we'll come back to Mr. Bowder.
John Timmets?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
You can.
Yes. My name is John Timmets and I live at 4735 Wallingford Street in the Oakland-Shady Side area of Pittsburgh. Ladies and gentlemen, I know you understand that we are experiencing the worst pandemic in 122 years, a highly contagious disease that needs to be fixed. But it also has brought upon, brought upon us a difficult time as it relates to voting in upcoming elections. We have had difficulty with voting and I think there's one simple solution and that's voting by mail. In Iowa and Michigan, people voted by mail and it was a huge success with some of the largest turnouts in the history of their elections. Would there be problems? Of course, but I think all of them are fixable. We could look at the state of Oregon, which has voted by mail for several years and it is working perfectly. And I think that we as a city and as a county need to think seriously about voting by mail. And I would hope that the City Council endorses voting by mail, send that endorsement to the state county, the county send it on to the state and who knows, it might start to spread throughout the entire nation. It's also needed because poll workers are usually elderly people and many of them are canceling their roles as poll workers. Therefore, we need to get voting by mail so people don't have to sit for 10 to 12 hours and be exposed to what could be a life-threatening situation. People are struggling, people are stressed. They don't know what to do next, but they want to vote. And I hope that we can get voting by mail. Because as a dear little old lady who walked across America for campaign finance reform said, "Democracy is not something we have, it is something we do." And we need voting by mail so everyone has an opportunity to express their opinion as who they would like to see in elected offices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Beth Rupert.
Can you hear me now, Council?
Yes.
Hi, Beth Rupert, 186 Home Street, Lawrenceville. Hello, Council. I quote, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and the Charter of this city and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office to the best of my ability," unquote. This is your oath of office. I am sure all of you have worked very hard to get onto City Council and you really want to do what is right for the city. What happened last week goes not only against the oath you swore to, but also the ethics training that you went through. By going by the motto that you will vote in favor of what that person wants in the district so they will do the same for you goes against not only the ethics code that you legally must abide by, but also the moral compass that has brought you into the office in the first place to correct wrongs and stand up for your constituents. By holding this vote, you not only silenced our rights under the Constitution to due process, but you also silenced your fellow council members who wanted to vote on this. Madam President, we are asking you to bring this up for a vote and we are hoping that the Council will agree to provide us the right to vote in front of City Council. I personally reached out to every single council member by phone and voicemail and I appreciate and applaud those that took the time to contact me so that they can make informed decisions versus voting just because they are scratching someone's back. I am disappointed that Deb Gross, who have reached out to as early as 2018, continually stated she wants to work with us, but has never contacted myself or my attorney. You would think that the person who wants to destroy your life would have the decency to at least give you a minute of their time. Those of you that reached out to us to give facts from all sides can vote knowing that you have everything you need to make a decision where you can sleep well at night. One of our biggest facts is that the stakeholders don't care if this house is torn down as long as a buyer only builds three townhomes. Judge James has verified this fact in his ruling handed down yesterday and you have been emailed a copy. Since the stakeholders won through zoning and their positions stating they support the house being demolished should cause you to vote and vote no to the historical designation. As we have stated all along, this historical nomination was not to preserve history, but to stop the building of five townhomes. Laws are enacted to make positive changes in people's lives and for the benefit of the community. In theory, this law makes sense because preserving history is important. However, like many laws, this law has many flaws that need to be addressed. This is a dilapidated house that has been hit by a wind burst and is being dangerous by a structural engineer. We continually hear that as homeowners, we need to maintain this house. We have done that, what we financially can, to keep the property clean of debris as well as fix up what we can afford. However, this house is extremely old and everything is falling down. This house costs us over $1,000 a month to maintain and we find it ludicrous that others can make judgments on us when they don't pay our bills and they don't know our financial status. The COVID is only making this matter worse. We are pleading with you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gary Hillmeyer.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Eric and Beth Rupert, the owners of the property at 186 Home Street in Lawrenceville, to ask you to vote against historic designation of this structure. I have repeatedly stated on the record and sent all members of council copies showing that the structure is unsafe, it's unworthy, and it lacks the integrity needed to be nominated. And number two, that the former owner, Mr. Ewald, or sometimes called Ewart mistakenly, was a slave owner or worse. He was not the first sheriff in Allegheny County as proposed. He is not founder of the University of Pittsburgh as proposed. Now, my, my statements were backed with actual multiple detailed engineers' reports as to the structure. And my statements as to the man's background were backed with actual quotes from the University of Pittsburgh publications, the census findings back at that time in history, and Supreme Court filed rulings. Unlike the proponents who just have repeatedly spoken with innuendo, half-truths, hearsay, hearsay upon hearsay, and whimsical platitudes like, "Oh, all this building needs is TLC." Also, there's been a false statement that George, the prior owner, would have wanted this structure designated. In fact, he repeatedly refused to ask for its designation. Now, as stated by Beth, the proponents have repeatedly said, "Well, three units would be okay, but we're going to fight five." And they took this through the zoning board to Judge James, who did indeed yesterday rule against the developer and we're back to three units. So I don't see maybe that there's any problem anymore. Now, I plead with the council members who voted to table this decision, which would lead to a default approval, to revote it back on, actually have a vote on it and show the citizens of Lawrenceville as well as the citizens of the city that they are not going to just do the bidding of a few people with a hidden agenda. And instead, you're going to take the vote and you're going to vote no against designation. And I submit to you, council members, those who voted for us, the member who abstained, and the ones who voted against us before, that if you do the right thing today, I submit to you that your constituents will remember that you did the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
I see Bob Bowder, his son, joined us, so we'll go back.
Mr. Bowder.
Good morning, Madam President, as a Council. This is a great honor for me today. My mom and dad would be very proud and I thank you for that. I also want to thank you for putting up with me for nine years. Taking my calls, answered my questions, helped me do my job. It's been great. I also want to thank Doug Shields, Bill Paduto, Patrick Dow, Natalia Rudiac, Dan Gilman, Darlene Harris, and the Clerk's Office, Council Budget Office, they've been great. And Michael Lamb and his staff down in the Controller's Office. You know, nine years ago, I came into this building and this city was on the verge of bankruptcy. You all should be proud for guiding it out there and being one of the greatest transformations, probably second to none in this country. This city has gone through pestilence, flood, pandemic, financial collapse, lost a couple of Super Bowls and a disaster in Atlanta. And I'm sure it will come out of these current crises a much better place. Thank you again. God bless. I'll be rooting for you guys from the Beaver County grandstands.
Thank you. Good luck on your retirement. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Apayala.
It's pronounced Apayala. Maybe he didn't understand. Thank you for the correction. Please, please go, please state your name and neighborhood. I guess he's not here.
And the next one, the young lady, I guess, is speaking, Shimon Puma?
Let me unmute myself. It is Shaman, that is the title. Thank you very much. And it is Shaman Puma of the Iroquois Aboriginal American Indian Confederacy. So I'm here to speak on the, the fact that there are many commissions for various groups of interest and concerns in the City of Pittsburgh. I believe LGBT has a, there's a commission on LGBTQ and the others. And we as the Aboriginal American Indians of the Iroquois Confederacy, with our special government-to-government relationship with Congress, Indians not taxed, are requiring that there be a commission to address our concerns, mainly focusing around land reclamation from illegal possessions of cities, banks, institutions, as none of these can own property according to the city and state charters, land restoration, resource detaxation, i.e. utilities, and the like, being on our own ancestral land and being beholden to go through these processes to obtain and use our own resources. We're also, let me stay focused here, mandates for all city, for all businesses in the city and of Pittsburgh to be held accountable for forcing assimilation upon our people in regards to city and state mandates, codes, ordinance, regulations, laws, et cetera, as these are administration, administrative, and not constitutional. And we are not to be taxed, harassed, touched, assimilated, et cetera, as citizens, for we are not citizens. Although we have a special government-to-government relationship to Congress and with Congress, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, the 14th Amendment, First and Second, as well as House/Congress Resolution 331, 100 Congress, Second Session, House/Congress Resolution 76, which clearly speak to this relationship. More importantly, how your governments are to deal with us. And I yield, what I will say in yielding, that we are looking forward to continuing our conversations and our meetings with the mayor's legal department, with the mayor's office, and ultimately with City Council as well. I yield and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
Matt Stuckey.
Hello, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. So as you said, my name is Matt Stuckey. I'm a builder and owner. I'm in the 10th Ward in Lawrenceville. What I wanted to bring up today was just an update on the sewage facilities planning module that we have on two specific projects in Upper Lawrenceville. One project's located on 52nd Street, the other is located on Duncan Street. So we had, we had gone through all the proper channels and approvals up to this point for the sewage facilities planning module. It's been brought up on the council meetings in, in the past five weeks or so and continues to get pushed one to two weeks out until last week's meeting, where it was pushed out four weeks. That four-week push would basically put us into the August break for council, which would essentially push things out another three or four weeks after that. So I just wanted to bring that up and just let you know that this delay is severely affecting our business. Our progress is completely put on hold with construction. Our homes are just sitting vacant for months as we wait on this resolution to be signed on these projects. And even more so than us being affected, the homeowners who are just completely in the dark on when their homes will be completed, they are currently in months and they cannot commit to an end date with their current landlord. So they are getting crushed on their rental fees and they just really have no idea when they're going to anticipate a moving date until we have some clarity on these resolutions being signed so we can move forward. So in conclusion, I just wanted to say that everything on our end has been completed for these planning modules and handed in as all approvals would need to be in place in order to reach the council to sign the resolution. At this point, we kindly ask that these resolutions are signed off prior to council's August break so that we can complete these homes for these owners in a timely fashion. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
David Hager.
Hello, Dave Hager. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, again, just rearing on, as the last person to speak regarding the sewage... Hello?
State your neighborhood.
Dave Hager in North Side Brighton Heights, Collin Garden Development in Lawrenceville.
Thank you.
Again, we're also, we're PVE, we're the engineer representing the development Penrose. Again, we're waiting on resolution of our sewage facility planning module as well. I was on site last week. The three buildings, the three single-family houses are currently all framed up and are continuing to work on the elements that they can. But again, we're held up from starting any of our interior plumbing and our PWSA work until we get resolution on our sewage facility planning module. Again, it was submitted a month and a half ago and again, we keep getting tabled every other week or every week. And again, we have tenants and homeowners trying to, you know, schedule their move-ins as well. So again, I talked with PWSA and, you know, they're seeing what they can do on their end. But again, really, we just need to get these approved as soon as possible so we can continue with our construction and everybody can make their schedules to move in. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
You have Carmen Brown.
Carmen Brown.
Hello, can, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Carmen Brown from the Ninth Council District. I was actually calling about the resolution that's before council and I was looking at Resolution 040 and I have, I have concerns about the, about where this money is going at. And this Stop Violence Fund, anytime Ricky Burgess decides to do anything nice or do anything for black people, you always got to question it. So I'm questioning the fact that this violence, this Stop the Violence Fund seems to be, I did my research on this, and this, this fund is, is made up of Ricky Burgess. It's somebody that's very, very close to Ricky Burgess. So my question is, is that, you know, if this is money that is being taken, if this is money that's being taken from the police or put it in any violence prevention program, then it should be the people. It should be us. We should be the ones deciding what organization or where we want this money to be at. Because again, we're not going to be, we're not going to know because this money's not going to be transparent first and foremost. Okay, and again, this particular program wasn't, wasn't active for a long time. So all of a sudden now, there's money out here because of the exploitation of Ricky Burgess. He loves exploiting community trauma. He does that. This is what he does. So I want to know, in my community, we want to know about this money being funneled through somewhere else, not to Ricky Burgess's people, but to the people, whatever they decide, however they decide they want this money to be distributed. Because again, Ricky Burgess has exploited our communities. He's exploited, you know, our trauma in our community. He doesn't care really about any of this. Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter, all of a sudden now. Again, I'm very concerned about how this money is going to be spent. You just gave Operation Better Block $100,000 for a violent intervention program. Where's that money at? Why aren't there meetings, why don't we know about this money? Where it's going at? And why did Operation Better Block just get $100,000 and we don't have any idea? And this is also a preferred organization of Ricky Burgess. This is what he does. This is, it's always about money with him. So people on this line, Mr. Parker, I understand you had asked about the resources and how do we find out where these resources is going? Again, we do not want Ricky Burgess to make a decision on how this money is going to be spent. Because if we depend on him, this money's going to go to his people, his friends, and then, and then eventually to his pocket. This is how that works. So again, we have to find out exactly what and where this money is going to go. And that's my biggest...
Next speaker, please.
Gabrielle Gray.
Hello, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. I'm here today. My name is Gabrielle Gray. I am District 9. I'm from Homewood. And I'm here to address the resolutions. It's Resolution 0536 to 0540. And these resolutions, 0536, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement or Agreement with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for the Performance of Certain Work in Connection with 2020-2021 Community Development Block Grant Programs and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof, not to exceed $4,316,800,000 and Council Districts all. Now, it continues on and through the other resolutions here where it says, Resolution 0539, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to require all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and, and to the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 125G Lock 424351. I won't read it all in depth. However, it does say... However, it does state Kelly Street between Fifth Avenue on the west and the railroad right-of-way on the east and the south side of Franktown Avenue, also between Fifth Avenue. And this, actually, these resolutions go all the way to the urban redevelopment, getting the property all the way into Lamar Avenue. And so, my question is, where is the town hall meeting regarding the acquisition of the lot so that the community engagement can begin at the initial stages of development so that we can eradicate the systemic racism that exists within our urban redevelopment planning? Like, is there going to be a town hall meeting regarding these resolutions?
Counsel doesn't answer during the meetings.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, so what I'm saying is, we should have, let me propose it then. I wasn't sure if I was asking a question or making a proposition. We therefore should have town hall meetings at this stage before the urban redevelopment passes resolutions to acquire the lot, because that will help to eradicate the economic racism, the marginalization that is a part of the urban redevelopment.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's the last speaker.
That's the last speaker? Okay, seeing no, having no further speakers, move on to the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
We have one.
Oh, wait.
Reverend, we have one.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman. Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number five sixty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the URA, H A C P, the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Officer, and three twenty-seven N N L L C.
Thank you. Councilman, you have a wave, motion to waive Rule Eight on Bill five six four.
I move.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda with Councilman LaBelle. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number five twenty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreement with Kerry All Products, Inc., to process source-separated glass at no cost, and further for this stated purpose, to reach zero waste goals by twenty-thirty. All material will be hauled by the Bureau of Environmental Services for multiple recycling drop-off locations. Bill number five twenty-eight, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the Allegheny Circle Phase Two Construction Project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed two million, eighty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, and the municipal shares of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed eight thousand dollars. Bill number five twenty-nine, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, and the previously authorized municipal shares of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed five thousand dollars. Bill number five thirty, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with Penn Dampf for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Swan Bridge Reconstruction Project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed one million, twenty thousand dollars, and the previously authorized municipal shares of Commonwealth, Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed one thousand, five hundred dollars. Bill number five thirty-one, ordinance amended in Pittsburgh City Code of Ordinances and Title Four Public Places and Property, Article One, Public Right-of-Way Chapter four sixteen, Obstruction Section four sixteen twenty, approved process for sidewalk cafe, including permits and fees, to provide for certain temporary expedited measures for the city's sidewalk cafe permit application process. Bill number five thirty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Most Sites Construction Company, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and/or the Federal Highway Administration for work settlement and/or final completion and acceptance of the Greenfield Bridge Replacement Project. Bill number five fifty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a settlement agreement and release between the city of Pittsburgh and Judith B. Noslin, Sharon S. Hadley, Charles and Laura, Charles, Laura, and Shania Kaiser, Alex Machowski, Anna Zim, Schubert's Landscaping, Inc., and Regis J. Schubert, for the purpose of settlement of the city's claims against the aforementioned parties as a result of a retaining wall failure and subsequent landslide at Frick Park, and further authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a right-of-entry and license agreement to allow temporary access into Frick Park for repair work on city property and non-city property, and installation of a retaining wall on non-city property, and a separate agreement as needed for the city to own a portion of a geo-grid mesh to stabilize designated hillside in Frick Park.
Thank you. We have councilmen, a waiver for Bill five three one.
A motion to waiver, Bill five three one.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I suppose the bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number five thirty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and chief elected official of the city to enter into, one, a chief elected official in local workforce development partnership agreement, and, two, a chief elected official and fiscal agent agreement with Three Rivers Workforce Investment Board, Inc., and the chief elected official of Allegheny County, Rich Fitzgerald. Bill number five thirty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance and/or the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to execute a necessary instrument for the Declaration of Restriction and Covenant in favor of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to permit the installation of green infrastructure at the Bob O'Connor Golf Course Clubhouse in Shindley Park, as funded by the Alka-Sand Grow Grant awarded to the city, and further authorizes the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into other, any other necessary agreements between the city and Alka-Sand necessary to implement the grow grant projects for the benefit of the public. Bill number five thirty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with the PWSA for certain utility relocation and other elements in connection with the Allegheny Circle Two Way Conversions Project. Bill number five thirty-six, resolution providing for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the performance of certain work in connection with the twenty 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 twenty-one CDVG Program and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed four million, three hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, Council District All. Bill number five thirty-seven, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA and the Housing Authority for the sale of blocks nine M and various blocks and lots in the third and fifth wards of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number Six. Bill number five thirty-eight, resolution authorizing a corporation agreement with the URA, designating URA as the city's agent for administration of the twenty 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 twenty-one Home Investment Partnership Program, Council Districts All. Bill number five thirty-nine, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interest, if any, into the publicly-owned properties in the twelfth ward of the city, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, located at the north side of Kelly Street, between Fifth Avenue on the west and the railroad right-of-way on the east and the south side of Franktown Avenue, also between Fifth Avenue on the west and the railroad right-of-way on the east, Council District Number Nine. Bill number five forty, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interest, if any, into the publicly-owned properties in the twelfth ward of the city, designated in the deed registry office, Allegheny, as various lots and blocks, one nineteen Shetland Street and Shetland Street immediately north and south of Regis Way, and Larimer Avenue and Larimer Avenue between Joseph Street and Shetland Street, and Joseph Street and Joseph Street south of Regis Way, and sixty-three twelve Rep. Way and Rep. Way south of Regis Way, Council District Number Nine.
Wow. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading all this. Councilman Kraus of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill number five forty-one, resolution, amending resolution number seven seventy-three, which authorize the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Orion, Rulis, and Bochicchio for the purpose of providing legal services in connection with the defense of certain workers' compensation matters and claims brought against the city by increasing the cost by six hundred thousand dollars for two additional years of services and by updating the firm's name. Bill number five forty-two, resolution, amending resolution number four eighty-four, which authorize the city to enter into a professional services agreement with corporate cost control for third-party administrations of the City of Pittsburgh's liabilities under the Pennsylvania Unemployment Compensation Act by increasing the authorized spend by ten thousand, four hundred dollars for two additional years of service.
Thank you. And Councilman LaBelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Councilman LaBelle presents Bill number five forty-three, resolution, amending resolution number fifty-five, which authorize the mayor through the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to execute relevant agreements, to receive grant funding to plan and implement the creation of the Financial Empowerment Centers Fund within the city, and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for this stated purpose. Amendment includes additional sixty thousand dollars for the Financial Empowerment Centers to hire an additional financial coach through neighborhood allies. Bill number five forty-four, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in a total sum of three thousand dollars in favor of Shayna Harris, Jennifer O. Price Esquire and her attorney, related to the full and final settlement of litigation. Bill number five forty-five, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Erin Polczak and her attorney, Colleen Ramage Johnston Esquire, in an amount of five thousand dollars related to the full and final settlement of charges filed in the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, and jointly with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission against the city. Bill number five forty-six, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of five thousand, five hundred dollars to Robert A. Creo in connection with labor arbitration services. Bill number five fifty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety and Finance and/or Public Works to enter into an agreement for acquisition of real property and execution of related agreements for the site of the former U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs facilities, known as the Highland Drive Medical Center, for construction of new facilities and renovation of existing facilities for emergency management and law enforcement uses by City's Department of Public Safety. Bill number five fifty-eight, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Horn Dollar LLC in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars as attorneys for their client, Yelena Skyler, related to the full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania against the city.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
I don't think he has any new papers.
Sorry, no new papers.
Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number five forty-seven, resolution, amending resolution five sixty-nine, which authorize the city to extend a professional services agreement with S T R Grants LLC for software services relating to the E Properties Plus Profiling System by a term of one year and an additional cost not to exceed thirty-three thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Bill number five forty-eight, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a data sharing agreement to access certain data from the I ninety-five corridor for collision traffic flow data program. Bill number five forty-nine, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a data sharing agreement to access certain online services, including the Waze Connection Citizens Program data upload tools and the Waze Traffic Data API. Bill number five fifty-nine, ordinance providing for the general acceptance and authorization by the city of electronic signatures pursuant to the Electronic Transaction Act seventy-three by amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances and Title One Administrative Article Seven Procedures to include new chapter one seventy-two electronic signatures.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number five fifty, resolution, further amending resolution number eight sixty-three of twenty eighteen, by increasing the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS line item by one hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, and emergency solutions grant line item by six million, four hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars to reflect the allocation of federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security act funding. Bill number five fifty-one, resolution, amending resolution number six hundred of twenty nineteen, by increasing the not-to-exceed amount for the emergency solutions grant line item agreement by six million, four hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars to seven million, six hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to reflect the allocation of federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security act funding. Bill number five fifty-two, resolution, amending resolution number five fifty-five of twenty nineteen, by increasing the not-to-exceed amount for a housing opportunities for persons with AIDS line item agreement by one hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars to one million, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars to reflect the allocation of federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security act funding. Bill number five fifty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement with E Holding, Inc., prepare a feasibility study for a reconceptionalized visation and reinstillation of the Cantini Mosaic at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Bill number five fifty-four, resolution lifting the demolition moratorium in the area compromised by the boundaries identified in the Mexican War Street Expansion, National Register nomination of two thousand and eight imposed pursuant to resolution four sixty-eight of twenty thirteen. Bill number five fifty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement with Boom Concepts and/or Bloom Field Garfield Corporation to coordinate a program of responsive temporary art by local artists, a temporary display on city-owned structures in the public ram at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'm motioning to wait. Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, motion to wait. We'll wait on five fifty-five.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Sounds like you're going to have a busy agenda tomorrow, Councilman LaBelle. And then myself, I have two communications, one for acting pay for IMP and one for PCTV annual report. Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill number five sixty, communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting an acting pay approval on behalf of the Innovation and Performance for Jeffrey Helba for the acting pay policy revised in June twenty eighteen. Bill number five sixty-one, communication for John H. Patterson, Executive Director of Pittsburgh Community Television Corporation, submitting PCTV's twenty nineteen annual report.
Thank you, Kevin. Read, receive, and file.
Sure moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's approved. And now, we have a Bill five six five for introduction. Thank you, that's approved, and now we have a bill five six five for introduction.
Council President also presents bill number five sixty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into temporary construction easements, temporary trail easements, and permanent trail easements in lieu of imminent domain with the owners of certain properties in the sixth ward of the city, addressed as one forty-seven thirty-ninth Street for multi-modular trail work related to public mobility.
Thank you, and that will be assigned to another committee next week. Now we'll move on to unfinished business, we have a motion to approve. Madam Clerk, do you want to read the bills first?
Yes. Bill number four fifty-four, resolution appointing Andrew Dash as Director of the Department of City Planning. Bill number four sixty-seven, resolution appointing Ms. Betsy Magley to serve as a Commissioner for the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Bill number four seventy-one, resolution appointing Ms. Rhoda Neff to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? And we had the interviews, and I just want to say, I think Director Dash has been doing this job for a while, even though I continue to say I have concerns with city planning, I think that he's a great fit for this job, and I think, looking forward to working with him and making some of the changes needed that I think that we need made, and I know council members have some suggestions as well, and I want to thank the others for their willingness to serve. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're approved, and we just want to thank them for their willingness to serve and good luck. Is there any unfinished business before council? The next order of business is reports to committee for final action, Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have an emergency, my mom, can Reverend Burgess take over this meeting? Reverend, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, can you take the meeting?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, should I make a question to vote for the bills?
If you want to register your vote.
My vote, yeah, registered vote, please.
That's it.
Thank you.
Take care of your mother.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to, I believe, we have a motion on these, was there a motion on the, Madam Clerk, tell me where.
Okay, we're at Councilman Lavelle's Committee for Final Action, so I'll need to read his bills first.
Do we already pass, do we pass, do we already pass, do we vote on the appointments?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that's what I was asking, okay, so that brings us now to reports of final action, Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law, please.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents bill number five twenty-two, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for July eighth, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number two hundred, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title One, Administrative Article Nine, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, to add Chapter one seventy-seven B, Pittsburgh Commission on Racial Equity pursuant to the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter one oh two and two oh eight. Bill number two oh one, resolution adopting the ten commitments of racial equality. Bill number five nineteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into a license agreement with McCormick, Brown, and Salazar Inc. to allow the performance of site preparation work on designated city property in order to facilitate the construction of the Laramore East Liberty Phase Three and Four Chores Neighborhood Development.
Thank you very much, having heard the reading of the title and substance of the bill, is there any further discussion on these bills? Seeing none, these bills are ready for final actions, those who are in agreement with them will say aye when your name is called, those opposed will vote nay. Madam Clerk.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you very much, the bills having received, the required votes are now finally passed. That takes us to, I believe, Councilman Coghill on Public Works, Committee on Public Works.
Yes, Councilman Burgess.
Thank you very much.
You.
No.
Councilman O'Connor.
I'm sorry, Lev will take it back in order, I'm having trouble reading my paper. Councilman O'Connor on Public Safety Services.
Councilman Burgess, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilman O'Connor presents bill number five twenty-three, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for July eighth, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number four eighty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Auto Theft Prevention Authority for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of two hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars that will be used to establish coordinate and fund activity to prevent combat and reduce auto theft. Bill number five fourteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into an access agreement with the Carnegie Science Center of Pittsburgh for purposes of a drive-in movie presentation.
Thank you very much, these bills having heard the reading and the title of the bill, is there any discussions on these bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action, those who in favor of the bills, please signify by saying aye when your names are called, those opposed, please say no, will the clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills having received, the minimum required votes are finally passed, that brings us now to Councilman Bobby Wilson, I believe, right?
Councilman Coghill.
Did I skip you again? Councilman Coghill, I'm trying, I thought I already said your name once, so I'll say it twice, Councilman Coghill, he is, he presents the Committee on Public Works.
Councilman Burgess.
Councilman Coghill presents bill number five twenty-four, Report of the Committee on Public Works for July eighth, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number four eighty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a temporary right-of-entry license and transfer agreement between the city and Rosalia George for the purpose of partially removing a retaining wall and erecting an earthen wall at the rear and alongside the homeowner's property and in Frick Park. Bill number four eighty-four, ordinance amending Title Four Public Places and Property Article Two, Telecommunications, Chapter four twenty-seven, Telecommunication Systems in the Right-Away Section four twenty-seven oh three, Definitions in four twenty-seven eleven, consideration for a right-of-way use agreement to provide for updated definitions and fee structures for wireless small cell facilities.
Thank you very much, having heard the reading and the title of the bills, are there any more, any more discussion on the bills, Mr. President, Mr. Former President, is that what I heard, Mr. Kraus?
No, it was, it was Coghill.
Okay, Mr. Coghill.
Yeah, I talked to Gilman this morning, and motion to recommit bill four eighty-four, there were some legal and technical issues that are going to be hammered out to put on tomorrow's standing committee.
I need a second.
Second, thanks, Councilman.
Any conversation on the recommitment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, that bill is recommitted and will appear tomorrow on the standing committee's meeting, all right, that takes us back to the report for final actions, are there any other conversations about the bill? If not, the bill is ready for final action, those who are in agreement with the bill will vote aye when their name is called, those who disagree will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you very much, the bills having received the minimum required votes, required votes is now finally passed. That takes us now to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Mr. Wilson.
Councilman Burgess.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents bill number five twenty-five, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for July eighth, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number four ninety, ordinance accepting a new street name Lucky Lane in the sixth ward of the city as per recommendation by C P A. The following street name was approved by C P A in May twenty twenty. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill number four ninety-one, ordinance accepting a new street, Skevo Drive, in the fourteenth ward of the city as per recommendation by C P A. The following street name was approved in May twenty twenty. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Properties Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
You've heard the reading and title of these bills, is there any more conversation on the bills? Seeing no conversation, the bills are ready for final action, please signify if you agree by saying aye when your names are called, if you disagree, please vote no, your name is called, now the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you very much, the bills have received, the required votes is now finally passed. That brings us, I believe, to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger with the beautiful baby on the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents bill number five twenty-six, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management for July eighth, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number four eighty-nine, resolution amending resolution number five seventy of twenty nineteen, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into a maintenance agreement with Opex Corporation for Maintenance Services related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Workstation by exercising the option to extend the terms of the agreement for one year and a cost not to exceed ten thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
The bill having received, having, having heard the reading and the title of the bill, is there any more discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action, those who are in agreement, please signify by saying aye when your name is called, those opposed, please vote nay, will the clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
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 Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you very much, the bill having received, the minimum required number of votes is finally passed. Madam Clerk, I do not have the media announcements in front of me, so I need you to read them for me if you do not mind.
Okay. Ashley, to send them to you again, hold on one second, one second, pull it up here.
Mr. President, I have a brief comment, if you'd like.
Yes.
I'm waiting for the clerk. Thank you, I just wanted to say to members that you've heard me talk about the confusion with the sewer modules for many weeks now, and my staff has been diligently checking the online permitting systems to make sure that these projects have all of their permits in hand, I know that many of us have had ongoing projects in our districts that are coming through with sewer modules, but at the same time, it's concerning to me that we heard today that a building permit had been issued without allocation having a vote on a sewer module, which means that they didn't have their sewer permitting, so I'm going to be contacting our new director at P L I, and I'll definitely include the Chair of Land Use too, if you want to, Councilman Wilson, if you want to work with me, so that we can make sure that, you know, we all went, we were all happy about the online permitting, and so was the development community, honestly, and it's lovely for citizens to be able to see this permitting data as well, but we need to make sure that the sequencing is happening in the way that it should, according to ordinance, it was my understanding that we vote on sewer modules because of court consent decree, and so we need to make sure that we're all understanding the same things, and things are happening in the same sequence, so I apologize if there's any confusion, and I welcome any council members to, to kind of share any other experiences that they've had with projects in their district, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Meeting announcements, council will hold interviews tomorrow morning, Wednesday, July fifteenth, at nine thirty with appointees to the Gender Equity Commission and the Ethics Hearing Board, also tomorrow afternoon, July fifteen, at five o'clock P M, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on bills four oh four, four oh five, four oh six, and four ten, as they relate to the Stop the Violence Fund and policing. To register to speak at tomorrow's hearing, please call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight by three thirty P M tomorrow afternoon, you may also submit written testimony by email to city clerk's office at Pittsburgh P A dot G O V. Council will also hold a following series of cablecast post-agenda and public hearings related to policing in Pittsburgh, police reform, and budgeting. Post-agendas, Thursday, July sixteenth, at ten o'clock A M, will include the Stop the Violence Fund and policing deals four oh four, four oh five, four oh six, and four ten. The second post-agenda is scheduled for Monday, July twenty-seventh, at ten o'clock A M. Public hearings Saturday, July eighteenth, at twelve o'clock noon, and Tuesday, July twenty-first, and Wednesday, July twenty-second, both at six o'clock P M. To register to speak at the July eighteenth, twenty-first, and July twenty-second public hearings, please call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight by five o'clock P M, July seventeenth, and by three thirty P M, July twenty-first and July twenty-second. You may also submit written testimony by email to the city clerk's office at Pittsburgh P A dot G O V.
Other announcements? Anyone else have any other announcements? Before we end, I'll say a brief thing, we are in extraordinary times, we are facing, I think, two revolutionary things. One, obviously, is COVID nineteen, this pandemic has changed the way we do business. The other is this realization of the racial inequities that have been in our country, and perhaps for the first time in four hundred years, a realization those things are wrong. And so, I represent the largest African-American districts in the city, and unfortunately, the poorest district in the city of Pittsburgh, and so I realize that my constituents sometimes, because they're painful, they have pain, they live very painful lives, and not just today, but in meetings in the past and meetings to come, they will speak out of that pain, and I, I expect that, that's fine, I expect that, I know that. Sometimes, pain comes in many ways, I've heard pain sometimes come from my colleagues, didn't expect that, but I've learned to, to, to say that. We're in this time, once, years ago, one of my colleagues told me, when I said that we ought to think about African-Americans and what our city should do for African-Americans, they told me, it wasn't our time, and I never forgot that, it was not our time in sixteen nineteen, when twenty slaves were brought to Johnstown, Jamestown, taken from another vessel, intercepted and brought, it was not our time in seventeen nineteen, it was not our time in eighteen nineteen, around the time of the Missouri Compromise, it was not our time in nineteen nineteen, it was not our time for my grandfather, it was not my time, our time for my, my father, and I'm hoping maybe now, in two thousand twenty, this is our time. thousand twenty, this is our time. Everybody's pain is important, recognizable, significant, and I, if you have pain in this country, and I heard, you know, indigenous Americans talk about that, whatever pain, your pain is significant, but in nineteen, in two thousand twenty, if you're poor, your pain is significant, but if you're black and poor, your pain is worse. If you're LGBTQ, a member of our society because of prejudice, your road may be difficult, but if you're black LGBTQ, your outcomes and your discrimination is worse. Still, in this country, women are not paid the same as men. If you're a woman, your outcomes can sometimes be bad, but as our Equity and Gender Report has told us, but if you're a black woman, your issues are worse. And so I will, we, I thank you for passing the Commission on Racial Equity. I, I am going to try to move forward as a person, as a councilman, beyond the past pain, beyond even some of the pain I believe inflicted by my colleagues, because this time is greater than that moment. This is the time that we move forward as a city, to begin to say that Black Pittsburgh matters. Four hundred years, and we still have these inequities, four hundred years, and we see this pain. Now, moving forward, I will do everything in gen, and I will endeavor to, 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 to take the first step toward harmony and take the first step toward reconciliation, because if we can't do it here at council, then we will never be able to do it as a city, and we'll never be able to do it as, as a country. In particular, I want to thank Erica. She didn't know I'm going to say this. She has been, I think, we've chatted, she's been one of the most thoughtful members of council on this issue and weighing these issues and having heartfelt, I think, sympathy about it. We, we got, it's that time now, right? We're going to, I want us to think about it going through recess, you know? We, we all have these, these implicit biases, right, that we had from children. I've lost one of my best friends the other, the other day, and, and so we've all had these biases growing up, but that's not the time we're in. We're in this time where we now to now put our money where our mouth is, begin to put resources disproportionately into programs that help black faces and black spaces. We, we, we have to do that as a city, and in order to do it as a city, money is the council's priority. That's what we do. And so if we're going to move money into helping African-Americans, it will come through this council, and I will do everything in my power to, 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 to do that in a, in a civil manner, in a calm manner, and in a forgiving manner. I, I think it's time to move forward, and I'll do everything to be, to take the first step. So I wanted to say that because I, I'm, I'm, you guys know me, I don't, I say things publicly. I don't do things privately, I'm not a coward. I stand in the public and say exactly what I think, and so it's time now to move forward. And so I thank you for this moment, love you all, and hope that, thank you for establishing the commission. Its work will start even this week, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you in a closer way moving forward. If there is no other conversation, I'll take a, a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Do a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed is nay. Thank you very much, we're adjourned.